Get wrapped up in that.
I know, I can do.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be neat. Seven oh, here we go. There we go.
And Joe?
Joe. I'm gonna turn this thing down.
All right, well, it's seven o'clock. I want to welcome everyone to the May first, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence, remain standing for the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Frymark, please call the rolls.
Here.
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 President?
Mr. President, motion to excuse the absent member.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent member. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Absent member has been excused. Next, we have our approval of minutes for April seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, the agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April seventeenth minutes.
I have a motion by Ms. Connison, a second by Mr. Morrison, for approval of the April seventeen, two thousand and eighteen minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right, the minutes have, the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, minutes have been approved. Next on our agenda, we have a special presentation from the economic, uh, regarding the economic development comprehensive plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to someone. No one bothered to tell me who, but, uh...
Maybe, so, apologize for that. But we had a really selective, uh, or a very comprehensive approach to selecting the firm to do this plan. Um, we actually had seven responses, which I thought was great. Um, and then we picked the final three and then interviewed the final three. And our steering committee, um, ended up choosing O H M as the final and for your approval. We'd like to select them for this plan. Um, they really just did a great job, they have a great team and bring a lot to the table. Uh, really, this is the best group to do the job. Uh, since they'll be a little bit more modestly introducing themselves, I'll hand it over to Jason Sudi with O H M.
Please, as each one of you come up, please state your name and address for the record.
I am Jason Sudi and my address is Pete, D B, Hamilton Street in the city of Columbus. And we will all be coming up to tell you a little bit different things about what we're talking about today. Uh, thanks to everybody for taking the time to hear us and understand what it is that we're hoping to do as part of this comprehensive planning process. I've got a number of slides of the same slides that we went through when we interviewed for the job and we were, uh, obviously very happy to be recommended to do this plan. I've been a planner for about twenty years here in the city of Columbus and worked for a whole variety of municipalities. I have always worked for municipalities, but never as a municipal employee. I've always been a privately contracted city planner and worked with a whole bunch of different folks and we'll talk about some of those here and I'll let all the rest of my team introduce themselves in just a second. The most important thing I want to emphasize is the way that we approach these projects. We do a lot of comprehensive planning. We also do a lot of economic development planning. We do neighborhood scale and regional corridor planning. And the thing that we are most interested in is a collaborative process with a very diverse group of people on our own team, but then, of course, with a diverse group of experts from your city. Have been all around the region and done work in all kinds of places, but that doesn't mean we understand your city at any regard to the same amount of degree that any of you do. We want to understand it a little better and we want to use our assembled expertise in order to take where you have been recently and the great successes you've had and move those forward to a completely, um, compatible yet exciting new direction. This is a time in Columbus, in the whole region, when we are poised to grow by a lot. This is a community that is positioned to reap the benefits of that growth. You are geographically positioned for it, you are politically positioned for it, you are physically positioned with some of the land that you have here that can take advantage of the redevelopment opportunities that are going to be, be approaching. And from a transportation standpoint, you're in a great location. This is the kind of community we love to work in. I can't say that we can just pick any community to work in and they automatically hire us and we cannot pick others, but I will say that the communities we most enjoy working in are those who have exciting potential and have legitimate challenges that they're overcoming in order to get to a new direction and a new way of thinking which you already well, well on the path of doing. So it's the right time for you. All the things are coming together. We've had the opportunity, um, we went to the state of the city and we're in that great, we saw the great new facility. We are through the community all the time and understand these exciting different changes that are taking place with regard to the bigger business presence that we have. In addition, uh, right now, we are working on a large project that is involved with all of the corridors in Columbus, but particularly the east side. It's Mordor Corridor Study that is an evolution out of the Inside Twenty Fifty Study. Great detail about that, but what we are doing is using a very sophisticated tool to model what's going to happen all the way down to East Main Street Corridor. And we have proprietary license to that in order to do that to model other corridors in the community. And so what we're gonna try to do is use a little bit of art and a lot of science. The way that planning works is we use benchmarks, we use the understanding of what's been here before and how, um, comparable communities have met challenges that we may have and how they've succeeded. At the same time, we have to use a little bit of intu- intuition, a little bit of understanding of the marketplace that we gained over the years. But now we have a new tool to use as well. And this urban footprint tool allows us to input real hard data on infrastructure costs, maintenance costs, uh, initial capital costs, return on investment, and figure out what it is that you can actually do to succeed as a city in the near and long term. And the other great thing is I have a couple of members of our team who are experts at understanding the economic development and repositioning aspects that are so vital for every city to succeed. So, about us. As I said, I've been a planner for about twenty years in the city of Columbus. I grew up in Cleveland, I came down and went to Ohio State and thought I would be here for two years. And as you know, the city of Columbus is very, very tricky. You can't get out of central Ohio that easily. It's a convenient, great, uh, friendly place to live and I found that while working around the region, around the country, I most enjoyed working on many of these projects here in central Ohio. In addition, we have a unique challenge in our region in that we are broke. And that makes it a very exciting place to be a city planner. I've been with O H M for a couple of years. Before that, I was on my own for about five years with my own firm. And before that, I spent about fifteen years at another firm in town, working all around the county and the regional area and really nationally doing planning projects. I'll let the rest of my team come up, introduce themselves, say their address, and then tell you a little bit about the role that they'll be playing on this project.
Erin Moriarty, four thirty-two East Bridge Street, Columbus, Ohio. Um, so I, uh, also work with Jason at O H M Advisors. I've been with the company for a couple of years now. Um, I got my master's at OSU, my undergrad at U D. Um, so I've been in Ohio for about ten years, but I'm actually originally from the east coast. So I like to think that I bring a fresh perspective to central Ohio and the development that's happening here. Um, it is definitely a different world than New Hampshire where I grew up. Um, in my time at O H M, I've been concentrating mostly on integrating public engagement activities because, um, not a lot of people want to show up to a public engagement. So instead, we've been focusing more on engaging kind of public meetings, more like public events, uh, ice cream socials. We just came from an activity meeting where we kind of played poker, um, to figure out development. So this way to engage the community and get everyone excited about all of the exciting things that are happening in Whitehall. That's my goal.
Chris McGill, fifty West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. Um, I grew up in Circumville, Ohio, so, um, I am very familiar with Circumville Pumpkin Show. In fact, for longer than I care to admit, I thought it was a national holiday, which is fairly embarrassing. Um, however, I'm the Economic Development Director for Ice Miller. Um, I got my undergrad degree at Golden Green, my MBA at Ohio University. Um, prior to coming Ice Miller, I was the Executive Director of the Ohio Tax Credit Authority. It's a very exciting job title. What I would do is, is help referee the tax abatements, TIPS, um, and some of the, the tax-based grants at the state level. I would also approve and budget the Ohio Job Creation Tax Credit and Job Retention Tax Credit. And I had the pleasure of helping, um, the case administration design and ROI calculator for projects that come to the state. So when you would ever hear the governor say this project's ROI positive, that would refer to, um, a calculation and not what not. Uh, so that said, uh, jokes aside, right now, about seventy percent of my practice is helping municipalities plan economic development strategy. It spans everything from what the state should be paying to the ROI on a project. So one of the things that we'll get into later is what is the economic impact of what you're doing, what are the economic development pieces of criteria you need to focus on. Um, the other thirty percent of my project, which I think is synonymous to all of you here, the other thirty percent of my job is corporate site selection. So I've worked for a lot of companies, um, mainly I've worked in the past with P H L, currently do a lot of work with Chase, um, a lot of site selection, economic development incentive structuring. And then we also do a lot of public financial. So when you see a lot of mixed-use projects, they're using TIPS and they're using certain tax abatements, grants and loans, we typically help structure those and put those in account. So in a nutshell, I'm here to help with a lot of the economic development recommendations of this project. Thanks.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Pete Gasalvo, uh, five eight eight, Somme Road, Dublin, Ohio. Um, although our office in, I live up in Dublin. Very familiar with the area and look forward to, um, the redevelopment opportunities. Essentially, I represent the market side of the team, um, looking at opportunities that developers will respond to and that the, and that the market will respond to. Mixed use represents the majority of our work that we do and I've done work in all the four states in the country. Um, the Dakotas, Hawaii, which I, which I, which I went to in Vermont. So we've seen a lot of examples of things that have worked, that haven't worked, and we hope to bring that to the state. Thanks.
Good evening, Donald Warner, two fifty-five East Fifth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, five two oh two. Although I did, we have a office downtown Columbus and I work in the Huntington Building today and I am with Calphi zoning and we specialize in zoning codes. And so really, you know, this is a really forward-thinking plan to bring in some zoning analysis and that's what we'll do. Look at your existing zoning regulations and say, here's what, here's the plan, here's where you want to head, here's what your regulations say, and here's where we think there might be a difference between what you want to do and what you're currently permitted to do. And so that's a part of this project and look forward to it moving forward. Thanks very much.
So the one nice thing about our team is that we work extensively together. Um, we are working on a number of projects right now with Ice Miller, including the Morpsy Corridor Study and a project in Pittsburgh that is, uh, so a couple neighborhoods that are right north of the stadiums that have a variety of challenges from affordable housing to redevelopment. Uh, we're working with Pete on a number of projects as well. We're kind of repositioning the site near Dayton, West Carrollton. Uh, and I've worked with Pete, you know, over the last few years, probably on a dozen projects or so. Um, we just started working with Calphi recently. Right now, we are working on the Marysville zoning code update and, uh, hope to continue to work with them on a number of other projects. So while we are a number of different firms, we are very familiar with each other and work together very extensively. As far as the way the team structure will work, uh, I am the principal in charge, which means you will see me, you will see all of the folks here, all five of us will be at your meetings and we'll be doing the actual work. Obviously, we have a team of people to help us, but we're not gonna show up today and you're not gonna see us again and we don't work like that. We'll be here the whole way and, uh, I will be in charge of making sure that the plan goes the way you want it to and we deliver the exact product that you need. Erin will be in charge of making sure there's, uh, consistent day-to-day contact, keeping everything in line with regards to the way the planning process works. And then each of the other two gentlemen will be in charge of their respective parts of the plan underneath the umbrella of O H M. Just a little bit about O H M. We're a company of about four hundred people. Our office is spread from Michigan down to Nashville. Here in Columbus, we have our largest planning, landscape architecture, urban design section. We also have engineering, uh, as well. So we have a multi-disciplinary program. The nice thing about that is that we don't need to go out of house, we'll go somewhere else, we need to understand some engineering aspects of the projects. What we will be doing is looking at some focus areas for you from an economic development perspective, but also we will understand the related industry. We're not doing a thoroughfare plan update, but what we do understand are the basic elements and have people right across the hallway that we can look at and say, hey, does this work? Does this meet the needs of what you think would be the future infrastructure projects and possibilities? The other thing is, we work pretty much everywhere around this side of town and have yet to work with you and we feel that it is overdue and we're very excited about that. Uh, right now, in fact, uh, I'm the continuing services planner for Bexley for the last six years. We work extensively with Columbus, we're doing the comp plan for the Hannah, we're doing the comp plan for Reynoldsburg and for the community as well. So we're doing a lot of stuff, um, we, oh, you know, uh, so right now, we got a lot of things happening on the east side of town and it's just, uh, east side activities. In addition, we're of course doing that Morpsy Corridor Study that we have at East Main Street. I won't reiterate what these gentlemen and ladies said, but that being, um, said there are a ton of projects on here, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk about any of those in greater detail as we go. Uh, Ice Miller again is, uh, going to be providing economic development. D D A, uh, with Pete, going to be providing all of our market analysis services. And Calphi will be looking at that zoning audit and diving in to make sure that we're in concert with the progress of trying to create. Okay, so that's our background, enough about us. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point before we talk about what's happening. Okay, I will press on. Um, there are, there are a few things that we noticed when we started to think about the community. Not that this is the first time we've, we've noticed it, but in particular, of course, a huge focus of what happens here is the fact that you have these three commercial corridors. The fact that you have a city of this size geographically and you have these three significant commercial corridors is, it's a big deal. It's very, the opportunities are well beyond most communities can say they have. You look at communities that surround you, they may have several corridors, but they are typically not all commercial and they are typically, uh, of a different character as you, as you encounter those. The one bad thing about having this many commercial corridors is that there is a finite amount of commercial that any community can't support. So you need to both support that commercial here and you also need to have other people utilizing it. Or you have to greatly densify the areas that are right, uh, adjacent and surrounding and part of those corridors. We think the solution's probably a little bit of luck. One of the things that we're excited about is that we are able to look at East Main, give you a little bit of, give you a little extra mileage out of your budget by some effect you're already gonna be looking at that as part of another project. But then we also want to apply that same urban footprint model to understand the gentleness in this Broad Street. The character of the way those roads work is unique and yet has a lot of similar characteristics in that they were, uh, some time ago, in areas where there's been reinvestment, they're still thriving, in areas where they haven't, they're failing. And in some places, struggling much more than a community of, of your size should be enduring as far as the number of places that just aren't doing that well. Part of that is a shift in market retail, part of that is the fact that they're single use and there's not a mixed-use component in a lot of, uh, areas of those. But what we're gonna do is try to come up with strategies to inject some kind of life and activity in very specific ways in conjunction with the economic development you've already been doing in order to find elements to allow those to succeed. The great thing is, you already have this growing business presence and you're already succeeding on your own merits and your own, uh, skills well in advance of this plan. So maybe you would think, oh, well, what do we need a plan for, right? We're already doing it great. Well, this is the perfect time to do that plan because you are succeeding in attracting businesses that will attract other businesses. If you have a great plan in place right now and coupled with the fact that this business present, presence and climate is growing, it will start to snowball on itself. And you can see it in neighborhoods and cities all around the central Ohio region. We are in a growth pattern, people are going to go somewhere. The Morpsy study indicated, the last one they did, the twenty fifty study, that we could get up to one million people in the central Ohio region. Could also get up to six hundred and ten thousand new jobs. They're going somewhere. This is the place where a good chunk of those jobs should go. You have the land, you have the opportunity, you have the location. So if we put a good plan together right now, it's a great time to do that. In addition, what's going on with housing here? Well, you have a, a, a set of housing that we also think has the opportunity to need some diversification and rethink the way it can work. We saw the stats about how fast-growing this community was at one time, fastest-growing community in the whole country. That was great at the moment. One of the difficulties is when you're the fastest-growing, that means that everything's getting built at the same time. It's better if all your housing doesn't get built at the same time because then you have different styles, different sizes, different approaches. We need to figure out ways to, um, basically position your community so you have a better mix of housing styles so that people can utilize what you have, but also strategically redevelopment areas that are infill that may, uh, may be able to provide different options. These options have to be at different scales and for different ages and opportunities. You have to have affordability, you have to have market rate, you have to have things for people who are younger and people who are older who kind of similarly like the same scale and type of house. You have to have walkable areas. One of the great things, we just ran some quick analyses with urban footprint and found that you're actually one of the most walkable communities to transit in all of central Ohio because you have those three big corridors. Now, I'm not saying our transit's a taster at this point, but the fact that you can't access it fairly easily gives you some great opportunities. So we have to think about those. Um, Pete, do you want to talk about it? We're looking into, like, uncovered, this data.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so, we wanted to look into that help with document, this follows with the, sort of overwhelming amount of development, building. I've worked with a lot of mobility installations across the country. I'm not a major like Kevin, I touch on it, it's a big area. Um, we really need to look at these, to give their opportunities, redevelopment opportunities for some of these. Uh, we can already use the market, people are expanding their homes. Um, there's a lot of same cell phones, there's something out there that can be a, um, loop back for people to, to change their homes. There's the nature where they stay on, or, you know, other opportunities out there that we can really change the kind of trade in all of town.
Mobility options, another issue that we'll certainly be looking at. We will tie into the bigger mobility picture of central Ohio with regard to the changing elements of mobility. The great thing about the, again, the Morpsy study is we're looking into future technology with autonomy. We're also understanding how we're linking to the larger bike and trail network throughout the, the greater communities. And also, alternative transit modes that could be coming online as we go through this process. Anything that we apply to Main Street would certainly be helpful to drive. Erin's gonna come up and talk about the project approach. Um, we have a lot of very detailed information on this in the proposal. There, one thing that people really do not include here in the project approach. So we're gonna give you an overview, but if there's any further information, we are happy to dive into any aspects of how we do it.
So our first phase here, preparing for the plan, that involves, uh, meeting with the steering committee, helping Zach and Joe develop who's on that steering committee so we get, um, a variety of opinions and voices heard. Um, we'll be meeting with that steering committee throughout the process of the plan to check in on the things that we've developed, to, uh, test our ideas before the public meeting, and then to kind of review those results and help us formulate the final document. Part of preparing for the plan also involves creating a website, a mini website that we then maintain and run and it acts as a, a landing pad basically for residents and, uh, and just to take. Depending on context, that's a lot of map gathering, info gathering, data gathering. Um, we'll get into the urban footprint modeling there and start to look at what is actually on those corridors, all three, and looking at those homes again, as Pete shows. We'll be more residential analysis in that phase as well. Phase three, engage and listen, is where we bring our results and our data to the public and try to gather as much as possible, um, public input as we can. As I mentioned earlier, we try to meet the public where they are, going to things that make them interested to participate. It's, um, a really big, uh, motive of mine to help the community feel like they own their community, know that they should be involved because of their community, this is where they live. They're going to be the ones that see this change that we're trying to affect and promote and so we need them on board and we need to hear their opinions because they know best. They know what's here, they know what they want to see, and, um, they help us guide the plan hugely. So some ways we've done that, as I mentioned, we've done ice miller, uh, concert and newer, uh, Thorne West and that old historic preservation project. We've gone to first Friday events and had events, uh, kiosks outside where we, you know, just hand out flyers, or we had people come in and do an activity on fly. We've had the traditional public meeting, we can absolutely do those if that's what we want to do. Um, but, uh, essentially, we try to get the word out as much as possible so that we have more than twenty people at a public meeting. We're, we're aiming for like twenty, two hundred people generally. Um, and we can break those up in different, different ways. So that's the engage and listen phase. Phase four is define the plan framework. So that's where we take all the things we've heard, all the data we've gathered and the urban footprint analysis and we start to draft up those, uh, development principles, plan goals, objectives, bring those to the steering committee, staff, uh, see kind of what the direction is going to be. And then, um, just write, write the plan, let's define the plans, reveal and test the plan. We bring that back to the steering committee, draft the plan, we bring it back to the public also and highlight those key development principles, the key goals of the plan, um, make sure that we got it right essentially. So we heard from you, what we came up with, what you think. Um, so it's all in flex at that point. And then finally, uh, phase six is finalize, finish the document, bring it back to you, be passed officially, and then it goes into, goes into work. So as I mentioned, uh, six steering committee meetings, so we meet throughout the process, um, basically, um, every month, pretty much. Two public open houses, uh, a public meeting, anything like that, to engage the people, celebrate the plan, and then one conference at the end for, um, the entire city. Oh, sure, so, I've been mentioning, um, separate a couple of times. Um, if you're not familiar with that, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look through our presentation at the time, but this is a brand-new modeling software that we have a license for. It's the same software that we're using on the corridor concept project with Morpsy, which is studying the five corridors throughout central Ohio. And essentially, it takes central Ohio's land use codes throughout, across multiple communities and how different locations are used differently, and puts it right down to one new set of, um, development, uh, so, um, generates a base model for Whitehall, then will select the parcels along those three corridors, Main Street, Broad Street and Hamilton Road, and, um, identify the biggest priorities, the biggest advantages along those corridors for redevelopment. And then using the model, we can generate different development scenarios where we heighten the density, uh, change the development. Something is vacant right now, we can make it mixed use, we can make it residential. And then essentially, we'll develop different scenarios and show what the differences are, um, in the total residents. scenarios and show what the differences are, um, in the total residents, in the total dwelling units, jobs created, the cost of water per resident, um, things like that can all be evaluated, uh, iteratively, basically, so you can decide what density of development you're really looking for, and then we'll use those results to develop. That's just an example of one of the urban footprint maps you can make. So this is a walkability map, it basically traces, um, from transit stop, right, okay, so, sorry. Uh, you have the transit stop showed along the corridors, Main Street, Broad Street, Hamilton Road, there's the red lines and the little stops. And basically, what this shows is how long it takes a resident in those neighborhoods to walk to a transit stop. So the darker areas, it takes them twelve to fifteen minutes, if longer, um, the lighter areas are closer. We can do this with parks as well, so we can show how far away each other is from the park, it follows roads only, it doesn't follow, you know, as the bird flies, but actually, it's gonna help us, because most people are walking outside, walking on the birds. Um, so it's, it's an interesting analysis that can be done pretty quickly, and you can show where your strengths are in a community, or where you're lacking, um, opportunities. Transit costs, essentially the same thing, so it's just another, uh, example of the, uh, costs that residents are spending on transportation. So you can see some areas, uh, where they have maybe better access to transit or spending less. Okay, so another slide on community engagement, because we really like to hit that one home. So here's some examples, we do workshops outside, we do walk bike audits, we, um, can give tours in downtown, we do the website, we can have some, um, public engagement activities on the websites also, so if someone can't make a meeting, they can kind of, um, put their, give their input online, sorry, um, and, and collaborate with us that way.
So if you want to, uh, emphasize, and I'll let the other folks come up and explain exactly what is it they're gonna do now with the project. We've done a lot of community plans, and just in the last four years, we've done over sixty plans, and a lot of those have been in the central Ohio region. Um, you can see it's a, uh, community plans. What we are very interested in is digging in, really understanding the community, and establishing a true relationship. We want to understand the most important things that are driving you, and what is causing you the biggest problems. We won't be able to solve every one of those problems, but what we can do is create a strategy that works with a land use perspective, a mobility perspective, and an administrative perspective, to at least position you to have the best economic success. So on that note, if, um, if Chris, if you could just come up quickly and explain what it is that you'll be dealing with as far as the analysis, um, of, uh...
So, um, one of the things that we want to be able to do is understand what the ROI of different developments or scenarios are. So when I say ROI, I mean, how many jobs we create, we typically know, we know that it's a project count, or they know how many companies or communities are private, we know what the direct jobs are, but based on the other industries in this area, what are the indirect jobs? What jobs would be created to supply those activities? Um, and then what are those new jobs gonna be respending in the community? What does that does, what does that do for other opportunities, including the tax base? So one of the things we'll do is not just simulate the scenarios for each development site, but we'll simulate alternative scenarios, so you know that, as Jason said, it's not always easy to grow, like, if you're growing quickly, you have to grow smart. And one of the things that we like to do is make sure those puzzle pieces are fitting correctly, um, because you want to make sure you're creating opportunities with each development project, you also want to make sure you are understanding what the financial impact is for each project. The other thing we'll do is give a bit of an existing conditions of the city. So, um, basically, one of the things we look at is commodities. Uh, you have businesses that supply commodities, you have residents that demand commodities. Uh, you have software that can look at what that commodity demand is. So let's say that you have fifty percent of your, the residents are, are demanding twenty million dollars in, um, restaurant and, and, um, bar activity, retail activity throughout the year. Is twenty million dollars of that commodity being supplied in the marketplace? If not, you have the ability to absorb more of that retail activity. Um, and we can do that for industrial, we can do that for plastics, we can do that for transit. Um, one of the things you'll notice is certain jobs in this area, because as Jason mentioned, you have a lot of jobs, you have great job access, you have great walkability, you actually have very strong access to transit. With each dollar of additional transit investment, it's gonna create more opportunities. We'll help analyze what that means, meaning as people move more freely, people will spend more, um, and that'll create more opportunities. So we'll help analyze that, as well as kind of help you understand the different developments and areas and the economic impacts of each, um, development project.
So as we wind down, I just want to walk through a few key projects that we have been working on, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on them, because you have, uh, much more detail in your packet, but as you see, we work all across, these are a list of projects we've worked on together, these are areas that we've been working just in the last couple of years, all across the state, and some of these, uh, plans that we're working on right now, uh, include this rather extensive list, including a number here locally. Uh, Marysville is a plan that we're just wrapping up, and then working with Kelsey on the zoning, again, out in the community, trying to make different things happen, doing a variety of different outreach approaches in development, uh, sites. Right now, we're working on the Hannah Comprehensive Plan, trying to simplify a lot of the trickier statistics for people, so that it's very manageable and understandable for the average citizen, as well as sophisticated enough for, um, for folks that have been dealing with development and, and planning for a long time. Uh, this is the, the Inside 2050 Corridor Mobility Study we were just talking about. Again, you see the east corridor, that's right down East Main Street, we were just at a meeting for the northeast corridor, just a few minutes before we got here, and we'll be doing meetings for all of those this month, and then working back toward our larger-scale meetings throughout the rest of the year on that project. As I said, I've been the contracted city planner for Bexley for the last six years, very familiar with the opportunities that they've generated and continue to have on Main Street, and see actually a lot more opportunity for you here, based on the size and scope of the projections that you have available. Um, this is a plan we're doing in Manchester, Shaq. Earlier, uh, there's a really fascinating, maybe there's some type of, uh, travel, I'm thinking, uh, a foundation. Just wanna thank the few, um, um, working on those communities, and a lot of city developers, and they're, uh, in a very difficult, uh, to go through, to try to determine how we can deal with the possible effects of gentrification and remaining affordability, while expanding on the potential opportunities for transit and motion regulation. Um, and again, in addition, we have a lot of projects that actually get built. We tend to work in places where things happen, investments get made, and development does occur, so we're not here to try to just come up with a land use plan, or just come up with a zoning code, what we're trying to do is come up with a strategy. And the reason our company's called Hiltheim Advisors is we're trying to advise you on how to strategically move forward to the next phase, whatever it is you're trying to do. And I believe in this community, it is maintaining and, uh, and increasing the quality of life for your current residents, and attracting a new set of businesses and residents that have the opportunity to take advantage of some of the great, um, proximity, mobility, and, and land values that we have right there in the community. So with that, I will turn it over to you, any of us are able to come up and answer any questions that you have about any part of the plan, any part about the proposal. Thanks for your time.
Um, first of all, uh, very comprehensive plan, it's a lot to take in, but I do have a, a couple of questions. Um, one thing I do recognize, in order to maintain good talent, to keep people here, you, you have to have a, you know, walkable space, something for the millennials and everybody but taken, everybody as, as far as community goes. And I say that because my, my son moved downtown, he wants to be downtown in walkable space, so I understand the need for that to happen. And so when you look at, especially in your phase three, um, engaging and listening, uh, the opinions, have you guys considered focus groups? Is that one of the options for that, is focus groups, or...
Yeah, that's a great question. So what we'll do is, in addition to the stakeholder, uh, well, in addition to the steering committee, we'll have stakeholder interviews, so we'll identify folks through stakeholders, gosh, it's been a lot of meetings today. Through the steering committee, we will identify stakeholders, and stakeholders could be anyone, but it could be community groups, it could be, um, folks who run, uh, different municipal elements, whether they are different municipal departments, it could be people that are in charge of rec centers or schools, it could be business owners, pretty much anybody that we think needs to have engaged part of the process, that wouldn't be necessarily part of the steering committee, sort of in-between that. And then, of course, we want big events with the public where we invite everybody to come. Uh, but we want to make sure we try to capture all those elements. The other thing we didn't mention, uh, is we will be meeting very regularly with the staff throughout this whole process. We don't, we don't think we're just gonna go away and not talk, and run over to and come back to the steering committee. We'll have sometimes daily communication with the staff, too, their chagrin, and sometimes weekly, but we'll never go a week without touching base and making sure we're on track.
Um, also, in your, um, mobile survey, what is the method that you guys will use in order to capture the information, to get information to, hmm... Uh, it was in your phase, uh, phase three, you said mobile surveys, and, uh, my question is how do you...
Sure. So, um, uh, for this plan, our strategy for the mobile survey is on that project website that I had mentioned before, and a lot of times we'll make postcards or bookmarks, we'll help them off the library, hand them out at community events that promote that website, and encourage people to take that survey. It's not necessarily statistically valid survey, but it is pretty, quite true. We can use the city's website, we can use Facebook page, ours, the project website that will create some more information on it.
From our website to, to yours.
Uh, and this was regarding, uh, comment that was made regarding gentrification, and, um, not having people displaced, I would say, from their, what is that a part of the, that's a part of your plan and how...
Strategy, yeah. Um, what we're dealing with in Manchester right now is a much more rapid problem, because you've got incredible proximity of downtown, it's architecture, and there is, I mean, it's just straight-up gentrification, people are moving in and buying under-valued properties and displacing people. And so what we're trying to do there, in conjunction with a lot of other folks and it's really working on this project, is basically kind of give it zero sum in the housing, there are the same number of units in that neighborhood at the same price points after redevelopment takes place. Now, that may not always be the same place, but what we're trying to do is get enough affordable units that they can compensate in new development for any that are lost. Whether we're gonna succeed, it remains to be seen, this is an evolving process, I think. I was just at the American Planning Conference, um, in New Orleans, we have a national conference, which is a great place to go for a conference. There were pretty much three main tracks that were talked about this year. One was public participation, that's kind of one that always comes up. Um, one was autonomous vehicles, which I'm very interested in, and the other one was affordable housing. So it's very much in the mindset of people as we're going to evolve in community center growth. The one advantage I can tell you we have in this plan is the fact that we are focused, laser-focused on the concept of how to provide affordable housing in the corridors, through the Morpsy corridors. And we're gonna apply that exact same approach, whatever is devised, and, um, in fact, we are just in the process of setting up a focus group meeting with the leaders of the region in affordable housing, who are part of our sub-community structure for the Morpsy corridors. So while I can't promise you we're gonna figure it out, because people have been working on this for a long time, I think the shift in mood and political will has taken place over the last few years, and as I'm sure many of you are aware, uh, the city of Columbus is now working toward those affordable housing standards for new construction that were new, that were, that was not existent a couple of times, a few years ago, I mean, these planners who can bring it up, and people who just look at it, keep moving. So now people are finally starting to listen to this notion, we, the corridors grow, it's successful, you can't just have one kind of housing, you can't just have one definite housing. So the, the short answer is, we have to figure out a strategy here, so that we don't lose the ability, people have all economic impact downs, to stay or move to the community. The advantage you have is you have enough vacant land here, maybe you have so many houses that are relatively small, that I think if we come up with a strategy, that some of those houses remain the size they are, some of them maybe get a little bigger, we infill the neighborhood to get newer houses that may still be small, but are perhaps a little more modern as far as the layout and the way they work, and then we create a mixture of affordable and market-rate housing, mixed-use along the corridors. You can really get to a mix that, that tends to work. Uh, there's a lot of details, I'm sure Chris will be able to provide, he's working on a project with Franklinton right now, that involves those exact issues, it involves commercial, market rate, you know, and, 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 and our team definitely understands the client's expectations.
Like that other type of, uh, technology from smart cities, do you think, would you have, like, the, uh, uh, quarter?
Well, the, the big thing, of course, that's happening is autonomy is on the way, and we're not sure exactly what format's gonna take. We need to understand how we can, we're calling it the other project, quote-unquote, future of the community area, as much as we can. We don't know, we're all making informed, enlightened guesses, but in the end, we are still guessing on things that we just aren't certain of. We're guessing on the future of the economy, the future of people's preferences, the future of the way things work. That being said, there's so many fundamental changes happening in the way transit is working and the way mobility is working. I think that what we can do our best to do is to try to capture the type of development that is less likely to fail if mobility changes. Right now, we have a lot of, a lot of development that is failing if mobility is changing. A lot of big box stores that have big parking lots in front of them, and all of a sudden we have these really cool computers in our pockets, and they can hit a button, and someone shows up, and, I mean, I could have ordered, I could have ordered food when I was sitting there at the beginning of the meeting, and they already would have delivered it here, that's pretty cool, that didn't exist. That's also not cool for somebody who has a restaurant that doesn't want to deliver and do that kind of thing. So we have to understand what those changes are. I think mobility is the number one thing that is gonna come into the way that our community works, and it is all about what the smart city approach is. Um, whether it's autonomous or just a different approach to the way that people can get access from their doors to the things that they need. Uh, as you know, from smart cities, where the, one of the huge initiatives goes access to healthcare, and, uh, we're talking about that earlier, we're talking about the, it's extensively long corridor, it goes Cleveland Avenue downtown, all the way up to Laris. And we talk about different aspects and different life experiences that people are having along the same corridor. What we need to do is find ways for everybody who's in all of these corridors, through different mobility options, and different transit options, and different investment, to be able to access the basic things, whether that be medical, whether that be groceries. The great thing is, you're so close to that, because you have three corridors. All we need to do is make sure to write stuff along those corridors, and as you saw in that one map, most people can actually walk there. That is not the way that most central Ohio communities work. So we're excited for those reasons, because I think the smart city ideals can't necessarily be quickly applied to a lot of communities in central Ohio. I think here, they can be, if we can just be grounded in parts. So as a long roundabout way to answer your question, I think mobility, and I think just access to the needs of people.
Pretty much, we appreciate it. Y'all wanna set your computer off for something? Or if I, that may be ours, I don't know. Oh, okay. I'll let Joe take care of that. I don't wanna burn out no five thousand dollar light bulb on the projector, we may not have enough in the budget to cover it. All right, well, um, it's our first opportunity for poll public, if anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes to do so. Not to come forward, but you'll have up to three minutes to make a statement. You gotta take three minutes to get up here, we're not gonna have enough time. Please state your name and address for the record.
We here at the address, the collusion and backroom dealings that Whitehall officials actively engaged in, the purpose of seizing the real property, no, they were, they were from, the distributional is created by the city officials to go along... Distribution lists created by the city officials to go along with the testimony of involved parties confirmed the city is attempting to bribe the powerful players of the association to sell the property by offering them, on average, 100% more than other owners who purchase at the same time. The city plans to have the Woodcliff owners vote on their offer, but they have attempted to rig the deck by buying votes at a detrimental expense of nearly 100 owners who receive pennies on the dollar. To add to the corruption, Whitehall officials have tried to use scare tactics and coercion to force owners to agree to sell far below market value, such as threatening to shut down the community for a year, in other words, city mandated homelessness, and bringing lawsuits against each individual, individual owners. Finally, the city's continual harassment of our community by sucking our resources dry through ongoing litigation is shameful. We never wanted a nuisance abatement, we just wanted the property. It is shocking to me that this level of systemic institutional corruption is happening here in our backyard. End it now, I urge you to do one of the two things. Offer just compensation for the property that is not based on incompetent rigged appraisal, and then create a fair distribution list that takes actual economic factors into consideration. Drop the litigation altogether and let us continue to revitalize our community. Allow us to spend our dues on creating a vibrant community instead of endless litigation that also costs pastings. Let Woodcliff have a future marked by redemption, not a path that ended in corruption and destruction. The owners are more engaged than ever, will fight this, news outlets have been informed, social media is going to take off. We might have deemed our community a nuisance, but when this corruption is unveiled, this governing body will remain. This planning is all great, except for when it destroys families who are not as important as the land that they live on.
Anyone else who would like to come forward for our first opportunity of poll public? All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 right here in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last Tuesday, gave an update regarding touch, which is teaching, opportunity, unity, and connecting hearts. Our minutes are on file, we will meet again next Tuesday, and also we will have a trade fair that we've been talking about, May the 8th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
President, Community Standards and Enforcement also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, we also met last week, we also met last year as well, we also met last year. We've had that, we've stayed here about.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Hack.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, we will meet again in the back next week sometime after 6:30.
Public Safety, Chairperson Thomas.
President Graham, Public Safety met last week, our minutes are on file, and we will meet again in the back next week sometime after 6:30.
Next, we have Parks and Recreation, that's Chairperson Cantor, he's unable to attend the meeting this evening, however, that committee did meet last Tuesday, the minutes are on file, and they shall also meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Next, that's all the standing committee reports we have, so we'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Magler.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you to OHM, it was a wonderful presentation, and I know I'm excited for the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Next, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. From the city attorney's office, for the month of April, we processed 276 cases in our mayor's court. Out of those 276 cases, only 24 of those cases were of a criminal nature committed by Whitehall residents, so that's 8%, which is a, about a 4% decline from this time last year. That being said, I would also like to give a very interesting fact that has occurred in the past three arraignments. And just to kind of give you background, my victim advocate goes down to do domestic violence cases in Franklin County Municipal Court. She generally will not know whether or not she has a case until that morning, because many of those cases are processed in the evenings. She'll show up, she'll get notice of an arraignment for a domestic violence case, and she is seeking a victim as it relates to domestic violence committed by anyone within the city of Whitehall. Since Saturday, and I don't think this has occurred in my years as city attorney, there have been zero domestic violence arraignments in the city of Whitehall. So she's had the opportunity to go down three, on three occasions, Saturday, Monday, and today, and there were no domestic violence cases committed by anyone in the city of Whitehall. So I just wanted to give that statistic, I thought that was a very interesting matter, especially with the weather changing. We might be, in fact, let me just declare it, we are going in a new direction in the city of Whitehall, and it's been an answer to prayer from my office, so I'm just really looking forward to her saying by the end of the week that there were no domestic violence cases, and then she might be talking about her job here soon. So I just wanted to report that to you, Mr. President, members of council, as well as to you as the public.
Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight, I would like to ask for certain considerations on the limits of the city.
Thank you. And seated next to our city auditor is our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report this evening. I would ask for favorable consideration on ordinance 38-2018, and doing a, thank OHM and all the other partners on their presentation this evening, and the presentation that they made to our steering committee. On behalf of staff, Joe, myself, and others, you know, we're really excited to get them going and under contract and, you know, to have a plan for this body hopefully by the end of the year. Thank you.
Next up, we have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel. All righty, well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. We have the treasurer's investment report for March 2018, the treasurer's activity by fund report for March 2018, and the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for March 2018. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have no items listed on the agenda this evening, and that brings us to our verification of copies. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll, on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I read this?
Yes.
Yes.
All righty, that brings us to our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. We'll begin with our third readings. First up, we have Resolution 15-2018. It's a resolution to adopt a comprehensive development plan that describes the public need for the property known as Woodcliff condominiums and affirming the public need for the property as nuisance abatement, and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city council to make an offer to purchase 317 parcels from the Woodcliff condominium unit owners association.
Mr. President, move to table Resolution 15-2018, that's the five fifteen.
Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Bailey to table Resolution 15-2018 to the May 15, 2018 meeting. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I read this?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 15-2018 has been tabled. That's the only item we have under third reading. Under second reading, we have ordinance 36-2018 declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Hamilton Road and Broad Street to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revise Code, Section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expanded, authorizing school compensation payments, and approving a tax increment financing agreement, and sharing revenue, and revenue-sharing agreement. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we, these are under second readings, if I did not say so before. We also have ordinance 37-2018, it's authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement between the city and continental real estate companies or its designee. That's right, being read by title only also. Next up is ordinance 38-2018, it's allowing the mayor to enter into a contract with OHM advisors for the purpose of developing a comprehensive economic, economic development plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, move to entertain.
Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 38-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I read this?
Yes.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 38-2018. Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance 38-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Ordinance 38-2018 has been adopted. That's the last item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have, first up is ordinance 39-2018, it's authorizing adoption of the May 2018 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 39-2018, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 39-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I read this?
Yes.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 39-2018.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of ordinance 39-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Ordinance 39-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 40-2018, it's authorizing the creation of the AEP grant fund and appropriating $10,000 from unappropriated monies in the AEP grant fund to the AEP grant expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 40-2018, move for suspension of rules.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 40-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Rules have been suspended on ordinance 40-2018.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance 40-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I read this?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 40-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 41-2018, it's also the last item of legislation we have on the agenda this evening. It's making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $51,000 from the Economic Development Incentive Planning Fund to Economic Development Incentives expense account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only, and as I said, that's the last item of legislation we have on the agenda this evening. It's our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for the positive changes I've seen in the last seven, eight years, and putting up with the BS constantly from naysayers, one in particular. I have a problem, and I can't stand back and do nothing. When dealing with bullies, I tend to fight back. Now to address my problem. I volunteered for the Charter Review Commission because I am so impressed in the direction Whitehall is headed and all the progress. The city has never been better. When I stepped up to volunteer, I never imagined the constant intimidation while Dixon sat there taking notes for his blog and Facebook, just to criticize our every word. Personally, this made for an uncomfortable situation. I'm not biased, and neither were other members. We shouldn't be criticized for our opinions. No wonder nobody wants to volunteer, putting forth the effort. To then just receive Dixon's criticism? I can't even imagine putting up with this for years. You, our elected officials, are saints. After reading his blog and email comments, he had written, he had written, "The elected officials have no integrity, their character and actions are self-centered, and they habitually disrespect," just to name a few. These are his own words. But this describes Gerald Dixon, not our elected officials. Maybe that's why he has never been elected, the people see right through it. You are bullies. He also wrote, "The Charter Commission was ripe with many conflicts. The Charter Commission didn't take the time to research and investigate for themselves." He was referring to term limits. This is major BS. We worked very hard and put in many hours of research and analysis to come up with our findings. We even went as far as to assign individual homework every week. I highly take offense to the disregard from me and my fellow members. Gerald, please note for your blog, one of our homework assignments that we found was the surrounding cities do not, and I repeat, do not have term limits. He sends out such hatred and negativity, and should be called out for exactly who he is, a bully. You need to present all the facts to the public, Gerald, not just the Gerald Dick, Dixon version. Finally, if you're so unhappy in Whitehall and the way things are done, then move. Try putting energy on something positive and productive. You might then become a happier person. And by the way, Gerald, you could have a heyday with Columbus Council. Thank you all for allowing me to address my problem, and please note that everyone of you are appreciated by many. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward for poll council? Please state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to three minutes.
3877 Donny Street. You know, bias, conflicts of interest, they're important, they exist. It's not necessarily because someone will do something, but it's the perception on the public's part that there could be something wrong. And when you deal with government entities, that's why the conflict of interest is important. That is why. I find it fascinating that Ms. Bentley, who was on the Charter Review Commission, who I thanked for her service publicly, gets up to talk to council, but she's not talking to you, she's talking to me, she's talking to everyone in this audience. I am a Whitehall native, and my job as an American citizen is to make sure that you are doing your job correctly. That includes political appointees like Ms. Bentley. If they are not, it is my obligation and my duty as an American citizen to point it out. So you cannot say, the Pledge of Allegiance, you cannot care about America and the troops and everything else and not do your duty. I don't serve in the military, but I stand there, and I let people know when you or anyone else is up to things that are wrong. That is my duty. And to call that out, that's fine, that's her First Amendment rights, that's anyone's First Amendment rights. But what I do is holy to this country. If you don't understand, and I don't, and I want an apology from you, Mr. Bailey, and Mr. Miller, for your behavior- an apology from you, Mr. Bailey, and Mr. Miller, for your behavior four weeks ago. How about that? This citizen, you don't know how to deal with the citizens. I don't know why you keep this job over your honor. What is your honor worth? $5,200 a year? It's ridiculous. And I'm very happy.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward during poll public? You'll have up to three minutes. Alright, we'll move on to community date board.
I have a reminder, this is small business week, so I'd like to remind you all, stop small. If you're wondering where to go in Whitehall, follow our Facebook page to visit Whitehall, or you can go to the site every day, although it's smaller than this.
Who else has something for community date board?
The courage and prayer.
Yes. National Day of Prayer.
National Day of Prayer, right at the police station over at the gazebo. Is that at 6:30 or 7?
6:30.
6:30. So hopefully, everybody will join us for that.
All are welcome.
Two months out is the Cruze Inn on June 23. Mark your calendars. June 24 is the rain day, just in case people don't like to bring their cars out when it's raining. And then the following weekend, June 30, will be the pageants, and they'll be over at Rosemore Junior High. I still call it Junior High. I think it's middle now. But hopefully, you'll join us over there as well. Two months out.
May the 8, from 2 to 6:30, is the first academic trade fair at the Whitehall Yearling High School, and the building trades, constructions will be present. It is an opportunity for job and career readiness for high school students as an alternative to college for those students that may not want to go to college, that may want to pursue a career in the building trades. There will be booths set up, and each student can go around and talk to the different trades that will be available. And again, that's May 8, 2 to 6:30.
Who else has something for community date board? Alright, we'll move on to poll council, and we'll begin with Ms. Connison.
I would just like to thank everybody for coming and your comments, and welcome to the town, and your others, and come again in two more weeks.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for having me. Thank you for coming, and thank you for my work.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Mr. President, I would like to welcome you to the floor of the whitehall board.
Alright, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank you all for coming, and you folks with OHM. It's a breath of fresh air. It's, you know, years of different committees meeting and strategic planning that we had, and all these ideas that we've had over, I don't know how long, I just witnessed, and your comprehensive plan. So I'm really excited to see, you know, what you guys come up with. And I know that the way this city hall and this council operates and the community, that a lot of the things that may grow out of that will continue on for 10, 20 years, and that's what's exciting, because that's the direction we've been headed for about the last 10 years. Great debate tonight. I love it when somebody can share their personal opinion. Problem is, sometimes it may upset an individual. So if it were a debate, Mr. President, and I had to vote, I'd give Kim one and Gerald zero.
Do you represent the city, Mr. Bailey?
I sure do. I sure do. Here's the problem.
One person at a time, and he has the floor, and you do not.
We don't get an opportunity to respond to negative comments made to us. I am simply, in a sort of comedic way, thanking Kim for expressing a lot of my feelings on a personal level, things you've done to my family on a personal level. So it's not always public in politics, and if you want, I'll remind you what I'm talking about, but not here. So thank you, Kim. Thank you for your service, and the other members out there that were on the commission. You're right, you shouldn't be bullied, you shouldn't be challenged. You guys performed a public service. You did an excellent job. The finding in the report was excellent. We have something to work on, and I apologize if I was out of line in talking to Jerry, but that's just the way I am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really good to see a nice crowd here this evening. OHM, thank you for your presentation. The 2050, I heard it's Initiative 2050, or Outlook 2050, or whatever, is really important to me. The chances of me living to its fruition is probably, you know, secondary, but this is something that is so wonderful for central Ohio. I mean, we've talked about it, like Bob said, for a number of years, and the chance for us to grow inward, to infill, is a wonderful opportunity for the city of Whitehall. And I'm glad that we've got the leadership in place to make that happen. So again, just like Bob said, and what the rest of us said, really, really looking forward to what you all have to offer. I know it's going to be energetic and dynamic, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody that is here today. Thank you for your presentation, ditto what everybody else stated, but also, I'd like to add, thank you for staying through our entire council meeting.
Those people don't.
Also, I would like to just have a few minutes just to say a couple of words. I'm not a native of Whitehall. However, this is my home, and my husband and I bought into this neighborhood because of the opportunity, because of the growth, because we could see the economic development that was occurring in Whitehall, and all the good things that were happening in Whitehall. It was diverse community, multicultural, and it had and offered everything that we needed and wanted in a community. I would also like to thank those people that show opposition to the things that are happening here in Whitehall, and you have every right to do that. Also, thank you for your volunteer, and Paul also, that you're here, your volunteerism for the Charter Review Committee, because we need people to step up and be a part of what's going on in Whitehall for the better. So I thank you for your words. I thank you for your review and your recommendations. And I also want to thank also those people that are in opposition to everything that happens here in Whitehall. You make me stronger. Fear is false evidence appearing real, and there is no way that we should all be saddled with the fear of having to say what we want to say in a community. So thank you for everybody. Your voice is what exists and what allows you to be who you are. And at the end of the day, what I can say is, the people elected me. The people elected everybody up here, which says a whole lot about the people. And so thank you for everybody that makes up Whitehall, because you make us stay on our game. You also help us to be better citizens, better elected officials, and you also help us to bring in good services to this community, to allow it to grow and stay vital to what is happening in Whitehall and the Ohio and the United States of America. Opportunity is here, and I want to thank everybody, my council, my elected leaders, for a great job, for always doing, and being at peace for everything that you say. So thank you, and thank you for the people that are in the audience today. Please come back. I welcome anybody, even at the end of this. If you would like to speak to me, and I've offered that before, but if you would like to speak to me, I am always available. Thank you very much.
Alright. Well, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I also am looking forward to the plan that we're going to have for some economic development. You know, we can go along with the status quo, which isn't going to get us into the future. You have to have a plan that's going to be adaptable to the ever-changing economic and social elements of the city, and without having a plan, we're not going to get anywhere. It took us a long time to get a plan together for our parks. And so this is long-term, and it's important that we start on this now. If we don't start on it now, we're going to get left behind. The world's changing so much. Just off the top of your head, how many things do you think that you could name that changed in the last year? 10 or 15, in like two minutes? If you think about it for an hour or two, you could probably come up with 40 or 50 things. And so if we're not going along with all that change, we're going to remain status quo. And if we're going to make this a city for everyone in it, and for the future that people want to be in and want to participate in, and businesses want to come here, then having this plan is going to really move us forward in doing that, and I think it's going to really set us up. The difficult thing about a plan is making sure that you have people who are willing to follow through with the plan, because every time you have an election, people's ideas can change, and so it's real difficult to put something together like this and then to see it through to the end. And the parks is a great example of that. That started and stopped, and started and stopped. 12, it started about 12 years ago, and it has started and stopped several times until we finally got to where we actually had a plan that was workable and that everybody was in agreement with. We had some others, but we had to change them a few times. So I'm really looking forward to this. Again, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. We don't have any other official business, and so I would entertain a motion of adjournment. Mr. President.
First, thank you for your comments, and I move to adjourn.
Second. A motion, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Elmore for adjournment. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, we are adjourned, and we'll see you all at our next meeting, which will be in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to catch hell from my wife.
What's that?
I'm going to catch hell from my wife.
Why?
Why?
Yes, why?
Because I was going to make some comments, but after she did that, it would have looked like, it wouldn't have looked like.
Some comments about what?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make some comments about this.
I've got such a cold, I don't want to.
But, fine.
Yes, ma'am.
The way it was.
I'm glad you did.
I'm going to piss, bro. There we go.
Oh, I'm going to say it.
Congratulations.
I'm just going to wait till the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Till the committee meeting.
Why?
Because I want him to put her.
Well, that's true.
And so she's going to raise hell.